So John asked me to give a short intro before we get into the nuts and bolts of the module on this distinction between calculating thought and meditative thought. So I want to start with a game, if you don't mind, inspired by my colleague, John loves games, and who has recommended some great books to me. One of them, by the way, Reality is Broken is a book all about the importance of games. Life-changing book. So thank you for that, John. So inspired by that, I'm going to start with a game for you all. It's a math game too, so I hope you like math. John, we should just start a book club or something at seed. I mean, this is clearly, this is more of a community than a curriculum. And that was one of the great book recommendations. Okay, so here's the game. What's the next number in this sequence? Everybody can play. 14, 18, 23, 28, 34. 14, 18, 23, 28, 34. If you have an answer, you can throw it in the chat, any guesses? Or you can, there's not that many of us, you can get my attention pretty easily. If anybody has read Wanting, then you are disqualified from playing the game. I think I saw somebody who has read the book, who just gave.
Yeah, Rebecca, have you read the book?
Rebecca edited the book, so she's doubly disqualified. Okay, so I'm seeing a lot of 38, 42, 40, 48, 40. Does anybody have a justification for why they chose what they did? Something that they're pretty confident in. Is anybody confident in their answer? One of them is right, I'll give you that much, somebody got the right one.
I was, I was looking for a pattern, so I kind of was going off 18, 28, and then went 48, just looking for some pattern. That's the only pattern I could see.
Gotcha, from 28, yeah. So, you know, the first time that I was presented with this, it was like, okay, 18 minus 14 is four, and 28 minus 23 is five, and I really felt like I was getting really close to this. Well, let me tell you the backstory to this problem. Are there any New Yorkers in here? Is anybody in New York? I don't think so. Because that's a big hint to how you solve the problem. So here's the story, and I tell the story in the book, my good, well, my friend August Turek told me this, and my mind was blown, because this gets at the heart of calculating versus meditative thought. Said, as he was a young executive at MTV, he was on a New York City subway. And one of his senior colleagues gave him the puzzle, and he said, August, what's the next number in this sequence? 14, 18, 23, 28, 34. And he's just racking his brain, he's doing all the math, and he can't figure it out, and he's just stumped, and he's just frustrated, because he prides himself on being able to solve these puzzles. And his friend stops him as the train is pulling into the Times Square subway station, and he just points to the wall, and emblazoned on the wall is a great big number 42. So the answer is 42, because he was framing the question in the completely, in the wrong way. He was literally giving him the numbers as they were stopping at the stops. Those are the stops on the, on the, on the green line, as you're, as you're going north in downtown Manhattan up. It's 14th Street, 18th Street, 23rd Street, 28th Street, 34th Street. And he was giving them these numbers as they were stopping. And they hadn't quite got to 42nd Street yet, so August had thought that this was a math problem, and he was calculating, and it caused him to miss the reality that was right in front of his eyes. And he pointed out the 42 when they got to the subway stop. So that's, um, that, so Rebecca got the, I thought Rebecca was cheating, but she had a totally different reason for why she thought that was the answer. So this, this is the difference between calculating thought and meditative thought. And if we're stuck in calculating thought, we'll miss the truce, the reality right in front of our face. So I thought that was a beautiful kind of explanation for this, because we live in a culture of calculation. It's always, you know, what's the, you know, what's the technological solution, the mathematical solution to solve our problems and to get into the future? And very often, we don't spend a lot of time in the present. And in entrepreneurship education, there's a lot of talk on solving problems for the future. What's the future going to be like? But not a whole lot of time about sinking down into the present and understanding it, which we have to do first, if we're going to have anything good to say or do about the future. We have to understand the present, we have to read the signs of the times. And the church has had a lot to say about reading the signs of the times, and sinking down and understanding the present and the reality. And that's missing, and certainly in secular entrepreneurship education. Nobody really cultivates these methods of discernment, and we can do that through meditating thought. So one of the ways that seed, hopefully is different, is that we focus on that. I'm going to pivot a little bit, and I want to leave time. I mean, I only plan on spending 10 or 15 minutes to introduce this. I want to make sure John, I think John has a couple of questions, so I want to leave time for that. One of my favorite documents in the church, which I'll share in the chat right now, and I hope you all consider using this as kind of a foundational document to share as part of seed. I don't think it's currently in, in the curriculum, but it's very beautiful. And this is John Paul II's letter to artists that he wrote in 1999. And I'll just read, you can pull it up if you want to follow along, but I'll just read the opening paragraph. It says, "None can sense more deeply than you artists, ingenious creators of beauty that you are, something with the pathos with which God, at the dawn of creation, looked upon the work of his hands. A glimmer of that feeling has shone so often in your eyes, when, like the artist of every age, captivated by the hidden power of sounds and words, colors and shapes, you have admired the work of your inspiration, sensing in it some echo of the mystery of creation with which God, the sole creator of all things, has wished in some way to associate with you." Okay, so it's the wonder that allows the artist to create. John Paul II throughout this letter just marvels at that and talks about the importance with which the artist wonders at the mystery of God, and through that is able to enter into this co-creation and participation in God's creative power. If you read this letter to artists, and you substitute the word entrepreneur every time he uses the word artist, you will see a beautiful letter to entrepreneurs about, about the sense of wonder that they should cultivate. It's absolutely amazing, I've read this letter 100 times, and every time I read it, I think about, you know, my, my, you know, vocation as an entrepreneur, and I find more inspiration from this letter than I ever had in any book that a business person has ever written. And there's a lot, we can really unpack this, and, you know, we can annotate this, and that's probably, I always give myself work on these calls, I've noticed that, don't I, John? So I just thought that I should really, really do that for this, for this letter. But it's, it's worth reading, it's worth having your students read and reflect on it through a different lens of entrepreneurship. So it's, it's getting at the heart of this very question, calculation versus wonder. When we think of artists as being these non-calculating people, right? And I think entrepreneurship is more art than it is science. I think of the entrepreneur as an artist, bringing something new into creation, some new value into the world. And that's why I think this, this letter is so important and so beautiful. So that's just a way to, to frame up this discussion a little bit. And it's just important, because modern education, especially with standardized testing, with the really heavy move into STEM, not that there's anything wrong with that, but it's just become very exclusively driven towards, you know, like a data transfer, you know, transferring information into the brains of young people, so that they can solve very specific problems to get very specific jobs at specific companies even. And sometimes those companies are funding the education and the testing. And, you know, seed is about discernment, and it's about helping the students understand that you need creative design, cultivating a sense of wonder, and breaking them out of the kind of narrow pathways. I mean, the beauty of it is, hopefully, you know, they will, they'll discern their, their true vocation, whether it's in business or not. And that will be a product of wonder and not calculation, if they're able to do that. So wonder is that sense of awe in front of reality, in front of creation, that allows us to participate. It's kind of the antidote to the culture of, of calculation. You know, T S Lewis, sorry, not T S Lewis, I always get C S Lewis. T S Eliot, you know, was very clear that being rooted in tradition leads to the greatest and most beautiful innovations. And that's one of the things that, that we're doing here, and it's the sense of wonder in front of the tradition, the sense of wonder in front of the mystery of God, that goes throughout the whole, the whole program. I feel like wonder is especially important to emphasize in this particular module, because the module is about doing things, it's about the lean startup, it's about, uh, it's about doing things. But there always has to be that, that, that kind of balance between the wonder and, and the action, the contemplation and the action. Let's see, I've got the book open in front of me, John. Jump in with a question, if you want to, if you want to take this in any particular direction.
I have a handful of notes, but basically as reserve, because this crew I've grown to know always has a question. So any thoughts out there, any reflections? What, what was triggered in your mind?
Well, let me, let me, let me finish up with one more thing that I forgot to mention that is talked about in this chapter. There's a, one of the books that changed my life was by a guy named Ian McGilchrist, and he wrote a book called The Master and His Emissary. And it's about the right brain and the left brain, not that they're totally distinct, they, you know, we know that they always work together. But the book is about the, the real hypertrophy, right? Like the hypergrowth and emphasis on the left brain, on the, on the calculating brain, kind of to the detriment of, of the right brain, which is where, you know, we, we take in new experiences through, you know, gazing out at reality, sinking down into it, we take in those experiences. But they, they can only be fit into kind of the, you know, what the left brain or the calculating brain has, has room for. So that, you know, the, the wonder, the looking is where we, you know, we find newness, right? Where we take in new things, and then we try to fit those into existing patterns, into existing mental models. But if all, you know, if all of the focus is on the calculation, we don't spend any time kind of expanding the horizon and the view, then we're just, we're fitting everything into the same, the same models all the time. So I can't really think of anything more important for the entrepreneur than, than that particular sort of sense. Even with business model canvases, even with, you know, the lean startup. If we're totally, we can sort of become slaves to what the market is telling us, slaves to the market research and, and the data, and trying to find the problems through technical means, when sometimes the problems will never be found through technical means, they'll be found through empathy, they'll be found through human interactions and personal encounters. A lot of the things that we've already talked about, you know, in previous modules, like design thinking. So the last, the last thing that I'll, I'll pull before I, before I open the floor to any questions that John or anybody else has, is a, a quote that I pulled from Simon Wheel today, actually. I stumbled on this, and I thought it had a lot to do with the cultivation of desire and, and wonder. And she said this about education, she's talking about teachers and students and education, and says, "The intelligence can only be led by desire. For there to be desire, there must be pleasure and joy in the work. The intelligence only grows and bears fruit and joy. The joy of learning is as indispensable in study as breathing is in running. Where it is lacking, there are no real students, but only poor caricatures of apprentices who, at the end of their apprenticeship, will never have a trade." So this is getting at this, the importance of cultivating desire and wonder and joy, which can be lost when we're bogged down in the calculated mindset. So I thought that was beautiful, I'll share that in the chat as soon as I figure out how I transfer it from my iPad to my, my other computer. I've got three different, three different devices here running at the same time, so I'll stop there for now.
Okay, thank you, Luke. So what, what did you notice about that? Anything triggered in your minds, listening to that? Well, Sean, as an artist, right? And in the brief conversation that we had in LinkedIn, I'm totally going to call you out, since this is your first time here.
I'm ready.
What stood out to you, what did you take from that?
Hi, everyone, I'm Sean. Thanks for including me, I don't know if you're all, if anyone else is new here, I guess I'm the only one. But Luke, it's nice to meet you, I'm excited to, to read your book. You know, I think a lot, a lot stood out to me, I, I, I have to second, or Luke said, I don't know if you're talking about just the end, but in general, the JP2's letter to artists, I think, is incredible, you know? And he talks about how the art and the music should actually like disturb the audience, because it should, it should have them recollect greater things, right? Our eternal, our eternal salvation. And so I'd never thought about it in comparing it to an entrepreneur, you know? But this, I guess this sense of wonder is why I, why I wanted to jump in in the first place, you know, right? And I've never heard it talking about, as in all of you I'm sure have, but as a, as a, as a participation in the creative life of God, right? That we're co-creating through Him. And I've always thought about it in music and in art, but I've never thought about it in the kind of entrepreneurial mindset. So to me, I guess I'm inspired to, yeah, to continue, right? Yeah, looking at this and trying to, I'm very calculative, so it's hard for me to, to get away from that if I can't fit it into a box, right? There's lots of things you said, how we get, we're slaves to the market research. And I've had this idea, this, some of these dumb ideas I've had forever, and I just can't seem to justify them, because they don't fit in, how you're ever going to make a profit or anything like that. And it's just, um, yeah, it's very, uh, yeah, it's just a new mindset that I hadn't, hadn't thought of things in this way, so. That's a little bit.
How timely, how absolutely divine and timely that is? Because that's exactly Module 7 in Lean Startup. If you've got questions that, like, how do, how do I make a living at this? I mean, we can work on, maybe a question would be, how do I serve more people with this? And then the prophet just rolls after that, and the Holy Spirit will, will be, um, his grace is sufficient, as we heard in the readings on Sunday. So what stood out to me, Luke, is in your book, you talk about the way that people that have sight impairments, that were born without sight, how they dream, and how that is so totally different than what we experience, right? And that people who lost their sight later in life, my mother worked, uh, the last part of her career working with the newly blind, and they continue to dream as they pretty much always dream. But in my work with, with youth, especially at-risk youth, we always kind of had this, like, this kind of underlying theme of they only dream what they can see. And so when we're talking about wonder versus calculation, when we're talking about dreaming what you want to do, because there's this barrage of models out there of what an entrepreneur is, what an entrepreneur does, we tend to kind of calculate and limit our dreams about what those things are based on those models. And I think, well, I'm going to take away from this, I need to read the letter, and as a musician myself, this idea of making a moving impact is, is enormous, right? And how many people live their lives thinking that art or music or any kind of inspiration, leisure, travel without purpose, love, business per se, is pointless and useless, right? What a great example of the, the culture of calculation that we live in. And what I kept coming back to, however, is I've always been kind of cautioned about my curiosity, right? I'm wondering if, in your minds, is there a difference? Is there, we think about curiosity versus wonder, are those the same thing? Anybody, you know, this isn't just for Luke, but I'm curious about your thoughts on, just generally, about curiosity and wonder.
I mean, I do know that, you know, Thomas Aquinas wrote, I think it was in the Summa, you know, he wrote about the difference between what he calls curiositas and studiasitas, and he contrasts these, and curiositas can be a vice, if it's just, if it's just curiosity, like, like knowledge seeking can be driven by all kinds of things, including pride. You know, it's just like this desire to, to know more than somebody else, or to know, to know more than, than one can know, or one should know. There's, there's one point where the psalmist prays something to the effect of, "Lord, let me not seek things that are too, too great for me." And if you frame, if you reframe that in terms of knowledge, right? That's, that's his great humility on the part of the psalmist. So, you know, Aquinas actually warns against curiosity, you know, going down paths of knowledge for the wrong reasons. I'll never forget, I went to Auschwitz, and I remember there was this like strong temptation to, to go and like read all of these really horrible accounts and things that happened. And it was kind of, like, I sensed that it was a, kind of that, like, like, is this really necessary for me? Like, is this, what good is it going to do for me, right? Like, I wasn't putting it in, in the frame of like the greater end in my vocation, it was just to satisfy some kind of curiosity that I had. So we contrast that with studiasitas, which is like an ordered, um, an ordered virtuous approach to studying. It's a, it's a subspecies of the cardinal virtue of temperance. So studiasitas is to approach, you know, the pursuit of knowledge in a temperate, well-ordered way. And it's a discipline, and we can, we can study with virtue, whereas curiositas can just be satisfying our curiosity about on Instagram, on Twitter, about celebrities, about what the Kardashians are up to. I mean, in my view, these are all what Aquinas would put under that subset of curiositas, and he warns about that. And that, that vice, I would classify that more in the realm of that calculating thought, for sure. And there are these, there's just cycles we can get into when we're, and so let me just backtrack, something that you said, John, I think is really important, on, you know, market, like market research, I go after it in my book, right? And it's sort of like upset some people in the business world, I think. But I'm not in any way disparaging market research, I'm just saying it's not all there is, especially for a Catholic entrepreneur, or somebody that has a spiritual life. You know, there's no greater gift you can give, I think, a student or, or the world. I mean, giving people new eyes to see is much more powerful than just giving them new information. You give them new eyes to see the world with, you know? So if I, and I just had a call earlier today with somebody that's in Hollywood that is starting a new production studio and having a ton of success. And it's like, if you were to do market research based, and you surveyed all of the, like Netflix audience, and you asked them what they wanted to see, you would, I mean, I don't know, sorry, I think, but, I, I watch a lot of films, but I haven't been thrilled with stuff that Netflix has been putting out there lately. You know, you would, you would get demand for certain, certain things that may not be edifying, or, you know, may not be the things that you're called to create. You know, so if you're just, if you're totally reliant on that, how do we ever transcend the paradigm that we seem to be stuck in? We can't make anything that's, that seems transcendent. I mean, it's only going to happen if you get entrepreneurs that, and artists, which, and I don't think they're different things, to be able to step up and to not be slaves of that, you know? And to say, listen, I'm going to make this beautiful piece of art. And there have been good movies that have come out in the last few years. But they, you know, they may have not sold as well as some of the more salacious things have. So sometimes we have to find models that are transcendent to the paradigm that we're, that we're in. Like, and the last thing I'll say about that is, you know, I was stuck in Silicon Valley, and I could not find a model of what it means to be an entrepreneur within the world of entrepreneurs that I was around. I could not find the kind of, like admirable family life that I, that I, somewhere deep down I saw it. I couldn't find some of the virtues that, um, that I wanted, and I didn't even know I wanted until I saw them embodied in another person, that I was just blessed enough to run into one day. You know, it's like, oh, like, that's, that's something that I want, I want what he has. He seems happy and generous and cheerful, and frankly, like holy is the only word I could use to describe it at the time. And that, that was a hunger that I had, and I had to look outside of the world I was in for those models of desire, to, to be infected by them in the, in the most positive sense of the word. So that, that was only the result of, in some way, not being a, like picking my head up from the grind for a second, to be able to wonder, and to be able to look around, and to be able to wonder at this, these other people that I was encountering, and to be able to just stop for a second and, and wonder in the face of that, right? And sink down into that and ask myself, what's going on here? Like, what, what is it that, that I'm, that I'm missing? And if it weren't for that, right? If it had just been constant data analytics, how can I get more traffic to my website? Which was a huge concern of mine at the time, then it just wouldn't have happened. You know, if, if the wonder wasn't there, you know, I certainly wouldn't be here today.
How do you go into either a calculative type of activity that's really hard to, to make it a meditative event? Or how do you even make sure that you're, you're incorporating meditative thought, but do it in a way that's like measured, or at least you block yourself from going too long? Or, you know, like, I'm wondering, Luke, how long should I stare at that tree? You recommend in your book, an hour, and then if you don't get it by the end of the hour, to, to go back and do it again. But like, odds on, on incorporating this daily life?
So I mean, I'll tell you a challenge that I try to give myself, and, you know, starting in the fall, I'll probably give this challenge to the students. Aside from staring at a tree for an hour, which is really hard. So meditative thought is sinking down into the present, right? And finding layers there, this is really important in the church, right? To be able to sink down and understand everything at three or four or five layers of depth. I mean, how can you understand the Eucharist if you don't understand the history? If you don't understand Scripture? If you don't understand, if you don't understand what the word substance means? I mean, there's, there's a lot of layers, right? And often we stop at, at, at the first layer, and, and we don't kind of sink down into the other ones. So meditative thought, you could think of, is sinking down into additional layers of thinking. So this is layered thinking, right? You know, and I, my challenge is like, try to find minimum three layers for, for anything. If you really want a challenge, try to find five, five layers, right? So I was just, I was just on a podcast about cryptocurrency, right? Like, fascinating topic, right? We were talking about memes, and we were talking about meme stocks. And it's like, everybody's throwing around this, this meme stocks, meme this, meme that, everything's meme these days. And it's like, well, let's stop for a second before we just try to, you know, talk about meme, and like, what does that mean, and where do memes come from? And there, there are at least a few different layers that we can, you know, understand memes at a deeper level. So what is a meme? You know, like, a meme is just, it's like shorthand, it's like code that represents this complex collection of ideas and desires and rivalries, right? Like Brexit is a meme. If I would have told you the word Brexit 10 years ago, it wouldn't have meant anything to you, okay? Like, you would have thought it's a K-pop band or something like that, it just would have been, you know, just this weird word. But now it has all kinds of meaning, right? It represents all these different desires. So, you know, a meme is a product of culture, and the culture gives the meme meaning. And like, you know, the meme is the product of culture, right? And, you know, where does culture come from? Well, culture comes from human relationships and imitation, and mimesis, and institutions. And so we ended up, it took us an hour and a half, and we ended up going through this, this process of just stopping right there, because I was like, let's stop, just stop. Let's, let's just talk, I'm not just going to accept that word at face value. We need to really understand what this means. And we ended up connecting meme to memetic desire and Rene Girard, and we went down this fascinating rabbit hole, and, you know, I came away, and we were making the connections in real time, like in, in real time. And I feel like, you know, today I have a better understanding than before. But it was, it was because we stayed there, and, you know, we stayed in the present before moving on. And I think so often, when it comes to lean startup and business model canvases, there's, there's usually a few different layers to, to go down into before we accept the kind of surface level, you know, grid. Layers of relationships on that, on that particular grid, for instance, layers of, of, of revenue, right? We can look at all different kinds, we can look at it from different sides. So that's kind of the essence of meditative thinking. So I mean, my, my tactic on that would be like, hey, the challenge is find three different layers to, to that before you move on.
Luke and John, I have a question in that. So with this module being that lean startup and this.
Luke and John, I have a question in that. So with this module being that lean startup and this focus, and these three areas are focused in the lessons, how would you, in a sense, bring in then this Odyssey project, which has these three different routes that the students are working on concurrently throughout? When you've got something that becomes so directed towards one thing? So I guess, would you have the students direct on their Odyssey project to choose one and be that frame of mind in one of the projects as a way of just keeping that central theme of that major assignment that they're working on throughout?
I think one way to think about it would be, you know, they have the sorry, John, it sounds like you had something to add. So, but I was just going to say, one way to think about it would be, I know, this is not currently in the curriculum as it stands right now, but like for each of those three, the challenge would be to discover an extra, you know, an extra layer to each of them, right? Like some additional meaning or something like that, right, to begin building some scaffolding and challenge the students, you know, to go deeper. And we do this all the time in, you know, in the class that John and I and Rebecca co-teach at the university. Like, the students put together their moral compass paper, and, you know, they'll list for the virtues that they want to work on, or some of the skills that they want to work on. Something like, you know, "I want to lose five pounds by the end of the semester." Or, you know, "I want to be a more patient person," right? And, you know, if you just let them stay, stop there, that's just not, it's just really not that helpful, you know? I mean, it needs to be concretized. Why do you want to lose five pounds, right? Like, why not 10? Why not 3? Why not 1? Why do you want to lose weight? Like, you know, just, there's always additional questions, right, to ask. And like, what are the right questions? And getting to the why behind it, I think would be a pretty powerful addition to the Odyssey project. That's just off the top of my head. That's what I would do if it were me.
What I would add is, what a perfect segue back to the module material itself. Again, I'm sorry if my internet is not working correctly, but a great thing to think about, like Kieran, in your case, thinking about a scenario where you've got a student who's like, "Nope, this is what I do for my Odyssey project." "You're not going to sway me. I absolutely want to go do this thing X, Y, or Z." That's cool. When we get to Module 7, what we want to encourage them to do is find elements, whether they're set in their Odyssey project, or they're kind of like searching still, we want to find whatever elements that allow them to prototype and experiment around to move that move the needle, or to move them forward in their goal, right? So working with Rick on his training, we got to the life model canvas. And, you know, the project for this module is for the students to to complete the life model canvas, and then decide which elements of prototyping they're going to experiment with. So what we're doing in a lot of ways is we're taking that meditative thought and that calculated thought, and we're mashing them together in a kind of a rigorous, pseudo-rigorous, but also just disciplined way of how do I test my hypothesis? How do I test where I'm coming from? What are my desires of what it is that I want to work on? And then how, you know, what's adjacent to it? One of the things that I've learned about human nature is that we're really bad at what they call the adjacent possible. We get really, in the way that we think things should be done, and that can cause a lot of frustration, right? To your point, Kieran, one of the things we were going to do on this call is take a look at the life model, right? So and I've got you, you're frozen, by the way, Kieran. It might be my internet, because everybody else is frozen too. But to just kind of run down the module itself, right? So we start in Block 1. We're actually working on creativity, the idea of creativity. And there's a little, like, a little challenge of drawing, which we're not going to do today, but we have a video of that from when we did that last December at the training, and it was a lot of fun. We learned that Luke draws a really convincing Stewie from Family Guy. And I dropped the video of that in the chat, so we're going to leave that there, and you guys can access that later. But it's a really great way to kind of, the letter from St. John Paul II says, "To kind of push kids off the pedestal, right, to push them to go in a direction as far as creativity goes, and the way that they think about themselves, of what they're capable of, what art really is, what it means really to be creative." And then we get into, in Block 1, this discussion of what is the difference between a growth mindset and a fixed mindset? Right? And there are, we share an article that's about Carol, who kind of started this talk about the growth versus fixed mindset. And a lot of that is encapsulated in basically how they feel about failure. Right? How they feel about what they think that they want to do, and then how we can go about fixing or making that more of an open mindset, more open to the beauty of the world, of the beauty of creation, and what is adjacent to what they think that they want to do. So the difference between, and, you know, a lot of you, growth mindset's been out for 10 years, I think at least. So you've heard these, right? The difference between embracing challenge, giving up easily versus the virtue of persistence, which is actually a virtue, by the way. The idea that, well, if I put any effort in this, it's totally pointless, it'll be wasted, versus this idea that the effort and the process is in and of itself. And then the idea of, what does feedback mean? What is, how well do we criticism, or is that someone giving you a gift? Of clearly improving. So in there is an article about Carol Dweck and the growth mindset, and all of these parts and pieces of it. One of the things that I wanted to help with, get your help with tonight, was who can we talk about, right? When we talk about our desires, we're looking specifically at who are our models? And in there, we have a particular profile, but there's gotta be an ordered amount of other people that we could profile, right? And Rick Costello and I have been talking about this for a while, and he's got somebody in mind. I wonder if, Rick, if I could get you to talk about who you think would be a great example of the growth mindset, and why?
I think I referred to Lincoln, but as I thought about it today, I was thinking Lincoln, Grant, Michael Jordan, I started thinking of other people, but I think I was thinking of Lincoln, because there's that story about all the things, he failed at everything. So he became president. Like, he literally lost every election. He had, I mean, he was, he failed tons of times. He was, I think at one point even suicidal. I mean, he was, he had mental, you know, he was despondent, those kinds of things. But he just continually persevered and eventually overcame. But you know, so I think he would be a good example. Grant was very similar. Grant had a terrible track record. And, you know, then you look at where he ended up. So there's, I think there's a bunch of examples of people like that. I think the what I'm hearing you say, and I think Luke referred to, you know, I think it's, is it called the memetic? I don't know how exactly quite to say that word, but it's in Module 8, coming up. But, you know, the idea that you learn from others and you desire things because other people possess them, or other people have them. And then how does that relate to what you're talking about here in terms of the life model canvas? And again, going back to what Luke said, in terms of application for a student, if they're saying, "I want to lose five pounds," or "I want to try out for the soccer team," or "I want to do this, I want to do that." To having examples of people, or a mastermind group, or people that challenge you to be better in some aspect of your life, I think leads to progress related to goals. So whether it's, you know, learning how to fail, "Well, I, you know, I want to lose 30 pounds, but then as I dig in, I I find out that if I lost 30 pounds, you know, I would, you know, hurt my health, whatever." But, you know, so I think you test these hypotheses, and then you learn more. Or if I wanted to lose 20, and I'm at 15, doing the techniques that I use, maybe there's someone else who's had success doing something else. So I dig in deeper to find out, well, maybe there's something else that can get me from 15 to 20. So I went off on a little bit of a tangent, but I was just hearing different things that Luke was bringing up. And then also relating it to, you know, the idea of failure and examples, people that have overcome, but then applying it to the life model canvas or the Odyssey project is, there's no way the project is going to come out the way you think. It's going to change, and it's changed from the time you started until now, and it'll continue to change. And it'll continue to develop as you develop.
Yeah. What a great point. So a word about the structure of the C modules themselves, every module has what's called a student prompt document, and that tends to be kind of the kickoff for the module. You, as the facilitator, the idea is that you send that or deliver that to your students. And in Module 7, it leads with a quote from Mike Tyson that says, "Everybody has a plan until they get punched in the mouth." And I love that, because it is so true, right? No, you know, it's all, we used to always say, "It's all theory until somebody sells something," right? Your plan for your business is going to be completely different the instant you interact with that first customer. It's gonna, because you have assumptions, you have an idea of what's reality, and the process of figuring out what is the truth, again, truth-seeking being one of the foundational values of C, is going to happen. Especially if you're involved, right, if you're engaged. Now, if you have a fixed mindset, and you're just going to hang back, and you're going to you're going to do your thing, and that's cool, that's fine with you, you're probably going to be okay. But what is it that you're missing is that human potential, right? Your ability to co-create with the Holy Spirit. Anybody else want to talk about who they think is a good model of the growth mindset?
I was thinking about Helen Keller with that, the way of hearing someone born deaf and blind, and could have just given up on the world, and to see even with those what we would consider ending obstacles over to overcome, and do what she achieved, and be the advocate she was.
That's amazing. Yeah. In her life, there had to be someone, to Rick's point, right? There had to be an influencer in her life that helped that to become reality, right? So it's not just you with your growth mindset are going to go take over the world. That, you know, I think her parents were highly involved, which
And her therapist that came down from, yeah, like a therapist that came down from Boston, that was willing to take, do that and say, "Yeah, I'll give this a go to Alabama." Like, I think that was, that's pretty, like you said, yeah, that's a good one.
It's beautiful. And what a perfect way to live out Catholic social teaching, our calling to the dignity of the human person. I love Helen Keller for that. Anybody else? For me, was, the first person that I thought of was St. Francis of Assisi. And idea of, you know, he was a prisoner of war for a year. Like, that could have been a game-ending ordeal for him. And then he always gets credited with, you know, "Rebuild my church," you know, Francis, "Rebuild my church." But he did that stone by stone, begging for stones. Like, we think of people getting food or begging for money. He's like, "I need a rock, and I'm going to use this to go build a chap." Chapels that were in the countryside around the town, the city-state that he lived in. And he inspired others to do this, right? Like, that is the growth mentality for me, that growth mindset for sure. Okay, last call. And then we had, we had also St. Francis Xavier, which I did some up on him. I was woefully ignorant there. And then also Maximilian Kolbe. I, yeah, if you know anything about that man's story, wow. But I think this is also another great reason to go back to studying the saints, right? These are models of holiness that were that did great things and miracles, right? But to Kieran's point, which was wonderful, and to Rick's point, also keeping the ball rolling on what we're doing here, we're talking about lean startup. And to me, the basis of lean startup is three things, right? If you remember anything about lean startup, it's these three things. It's build, measure, learn. And then the fourth one is repeat. Build, measure, learn. And what we're building is a solution to we call a falsifiable hypothesis. Then, we talked about this back in the training in December, and I love this idea, right? We think about the scientific method currently as being a way to confirm our hypothesis. Like, we have a scientific hypothesis, and we build experiments to confirm it. That's actually backwards. We want to build experiments to falsify our hypothesis, because the harder it is to falsify our hypothesis, the closer it is to the truth. Right? So we're working in reverse. And the lean startup method works exactly the same way. So you build prototypes and experiments, and what they call iterations around what's called a minimum viable product, or minimum viable service, or minimum viable experience, right? So this idea that you you're creating some version of what it is that you want to offer in the marketplace, some good or service that you want to sell to your customers, give to your customers, however you do the transaction, that will improve their lives. But if it's a big idea, like, I don't know, curing hunger, or bringing water to all the people that need water in the world, that's a pretty big deal. You would need some small way to move in that direction to test your hypothesis, how that will work. And so what we're hoping to get students to do in Module 7 is to give them a handful of tools that they can use to build these falsifiable hypotheses, to learn now about what is different between the truth of their Odyssey project and what they think the Odyssey project will be, right? And so there are these tools that we use. One of them being just some discourse and discussion around what it means to fail. Highly recommend that "How to Fail" by Seth Godin. It's very useful to me. There in there are two habits to avoid, and then six kind of, he called them random suggestions for failing better. Absolutely recommend that you go through that. Luke provided also a longer form of writing called "The Beauty of Failure." Highly recommend that. It actually references, "How does Jesus' example give us the courage to fail with resilience to remember what really matters?", which is what we're trying to do here, what we're, the good or service that we're trying to bring to our customers. And then I just recently came across a quote of a story told by Kurt Vonnegut that I shared on Basecamp. So those of you that haven't joined us yet on Basecamp, would love to have you there. We have a growing community, things that it does on the regulars that ask you for things like, "What's a quote that you heard?" Or, "When did you experience joy recently?" Or, "How have you used your power of forgiveness?" So if you're not, Sean, let me know, I can get you on there. Elena, I think you're on there. I just, if you need to, if any of you want to catch up on how to use Basecamp, a little side promotion here, would love to help you with that and get you started on that, so just let me know. But it's basically been a great and fruitful experience, because we have all of these people joining us, and all of these different kind of points of view on how to do what it is that we're doing. So then Module 7, Block 2, we kind of have this fun thought experiment. Gave you $50,000, and you had to use it to improve your lives and the lives of others. What would you do with it? And then they go and they work in groups to kind of build some ideas around prototyping, that what do, and basically brainstorming, narrowing it down into, "What would we do? What is our suggestion with this?" Fun little thought experiment. Ask your priest. "You want to know where your parish is right now? $50,000, question to pay for donation, who's like, 'Well, I'd probably go to the parish to fix Ruth.'" Okay, cool. Like, where your checkbook is, they're also your heart, right? So we know that priest is very much concerned with the the structure of the church, and there's nothing wrong with that, so you need it. But you'll see in the hearts of your students what they would do, this $50,000. Way to introduce this kind of thinking, and thinking in terms of how do we build something that we can test, how do we test these ideas before we go spend the $50,000? Right? So it gets into, and there's an article in there in Block 2 about, and it's a classic thing we do in C that's like, here, read this article, and then talk about it with your students. When you're looking at lean startup methodology, always stick to build, measure, learn. And that is, we want to measure this thing that we built that's trying to falsify our hypothesis, okay? So one great tool for that is to use the business model canvas from Module 6 to identify gaps in their thinking, identify biases that they may have, to identify some blind spots, right? Thinking about, well, we only dream what we see, we are blind to most of reality. Right? We're thinking about our Odyssey project in terms of where we've been and where we think we want to go, without regard to the things that we've never seen. And of course, to Luke's point, to, was it Aristotle's point? You can't know all of the things, you can't see all of the things, so you do have to kind of pick, and that's okay. But the idea is that you're going to build a test of this, and we ask the students to do that. In there also is an article called "Rapid" In there also is an article called Rapid Prototyping for Designing Your Life. That's a PD and several different techniques that you can talk to your students about. Um, and we begin with the second one, pen and paper, right? Encouraging them to be first put pen to paper and draw pictures or just freely write, right? Like, uh, just, uh, free association or free handwriting, just, just brain dump all those things out of there. But some ones in there that I think are really interesting. Uh, it actually calls out one that's Japanese called Jinchi Jambutsu, which literally means leave to learn. And in, in creating this sense of wonder and this culture vocation, we encourage you to get your students out of the classroom. Like I love the question, where does learning happen? Well, it actually happens inside of you. So it doesn't really matter where you are. You don't have to be in a classroom to learn. You don't have to be in a training seminar to learn. Learning is all around you. It's constantly happening inside of you. So what are the things that you do to get that to happen? And, and lean startup methodology is very much about learning. Um, mockups and models. So one of the things that they talk about is the use of prototypes. So this is before you make a working prototype, you can have a prototype. And there's legends say that people were walking around with iPhone shaped blocks of wood in their pocket just to feel what it would feel like to have this in your, right? So if you go back and watch a movie pre 2007, the phones were completely different because the iPhone came out in 2007. So the idea that this block of wood is a prototype for an iPhone is pretty wild. But there's that user experience of the five senses, touch, taste, feel, smell, sight. Like what are, what is it going to be like? And you don't have to have a, a degree in mechanical or, or technological engineering to make a prototype for an iPhone. Just make a block of wood and put it in your pocket. There's one, and there also that's really powerful. It's called the Wizard of Oz test. Never heard of it called that. But what they, what refer to that as is a mechanical Turk. So if you have an idea for an automation, right? Like if you've got an ID for, um, what was it? Oh, an, a fully automatic noodle making machine. Okay. And you put all the ingredients in the top and at the bottom spits noodles. This is such a baby boomer thing. Baby boomers just wanted to push a button and watch things happen like the Jetsons. Um, but you could automate that system, right? But mechanically be it yourself, just to get an idea of space. Like if we, we needed to put eggs and flour and into this end, uh, how much space does that take, right? So just a bowl would work for a prototype of that. So testing that assumption out about how that would work. So whatever it is, a lot of your students will come to you with invention ideas and that's wonderful, right? Uh, and invention is part of the way to being an entrepreneur and having an invention idea. So encourage them to build prototypes that they can test out, even if it's not a complete working prototype, that's okay. And that moves them in the process of learning, right? Build, measure. Getting better at drawing and, and feeling more comfortable with the way that you draw, build storyboards and use cases, right? Just draw it out, draw, roll the, uh, the, the flow, right? There's in there, it talks about scenarios and flow charts. Even if we just kind of pencil through how this would work is a prototype and moving forward in the, the lean methodology, right? We're, we're building a flow chart of how this would work. That totally counts, right? And because all of our models about what an entrepreneur is, entrepreneurship works, we might disqualify all of these things. We might, our students might say, well, that's not entrepreneurship. Oh, it's not based on your model, maybe not, but on what, how we're trying to move forward, absolutely it is. Um, mind mapping is huge. I picked up in the seed curriculum, we, we talk a lot about this book, especially uh, in module four and module six, the Designing Your Life book from the, the two gentlemen at the Stanford Design School. And then it has this really cool, um, diary that I haven't gotten into yet, but I'm about halfway through this. They talk a lot about mind maps in here and how if you are, you know, disciplined with the process, you'll actually uncover connections that you didn't even really realize were there between concepts. So as you're mind mapping, you're getting further and further away, but you're documenting how, how, and you'll end up finding connections that you wouldn't have otherwise discovered. It's a seriously powerful tool. But at the last, when I wanted to make sure we talked about today, this life model canvas, okay? So kind of going off script a little bit from what's in the module, and by the way, that's okay. You have creative license in the seed curriculum. You can do things differently than what we say in the seed curriculum, especially if you know that you're not so interested in the concurrent. That gives you a lot more creative license for the program that you design. Um, well, one of the things that I always encourage people to do is just to, to start with, with brainstorming. So I'm going to share a link here. And I wonder, this is an experiment just to see how it goes. If you would go there with me and this, Rick, this is partly inspired by you. What are some things on your bucket list? So find a, uh, I, I tried to name these, like Sean, you have one, the white box directly blame. Uh, Kiran, you have the white box directly below your name. Shannon, I know Elena, I did not, but you can have Luke's spot because he's gone. So we will make this a list spot. But just, maybe you have a bucket list. Maybe you're like me, you don't have a written bucket list. But write this down, you know, just write some things in there of things that you want to accomplish in your life. Okay. And no one's judging your hand, your writing. I know it's hard to, everyone's looking at your, you typing. But go in there, I'm going to take, take three minutes and just, just fill that out for yourself. And then Lee's, I put, I put you in there and then I guess we have one for Rachel too. She can just take one of those other boxes or Rebecca's. Put Rachel in Rebecca's box. And I promise it's all right. I'll play a little music and it'll be good. Okay, friends. Thank you so much for, uh, suspending your disbelief there. That's one of the, one of the things I like about wonder. I always ask people to just suspend your disbelief. This might be a thing, you might get something out of this. I got something out of this. Because to me, this is a great kind of pre-step to any kind of Odyssey project or, or, uh, you know, filling out even just the life model canvas as part of the project for the, the module seven, right? So now that you've written things down and I love doing it this way because then you can see, you know, what other people are on their bucket list and, and I see a lot of, of, of themes, right? I see a lot of similarities. A lot of people want to travel, right? I want to travel. Um, a lot of people want to travel, want to pay off their mortgage. Hey, would love to do that. Um, would love to own a second home, would love to, um, let's see, like play a full court basketball game with my family without injuring myself. Sounds simple, right? But you'd be surprised how not easy that is. Okay. But so as facilitators of this process, we can say, okay, you might even take some time and be like, okay, using your list, group things together. All of this travels together. All of this goes together, right? See if you can draw connections between them, but then have your students pick one. Hold on. It could be that you, I mean, you, of course, you can choose, right? You, you can choose and you can say, well, what's the one thing that you think you can do in, in the next year or two? Boom, there's part of your Odyssey project. Okay. And what we're asked them to do then from that point is we have them and share this with you. One, okay, so here, here's your beautiful work, my friends, beautiful work here, right? So you're grouping, what are some things that you might be able to do before, uh, the, the end of two years from today, right? And so taking a look at those things for you, um, school abroad, that could probably happen for Elena, right? Um, own a dog, Rachel, that could probably happen, right? And so you're looking at these things, it's kind of finding the thing that could be done. And I'm a big fan of, of, uh, quick accomplishments to keep momentum and flow happening and also to get those endorphin hits, right? So we're, it's kind of like the Dave Ramsey credit card payoff schema, right? You pay the one off, it's got the lowest balance. So you get the juice from that, right? It feels good. So pick one in here that you can do soon. And then what you want to do is you want to go over here in the, the, um, folder. One of the things I've discovered in prepping for this is there is a digital version of the life model canvas on Google and it makes it so that you can just move these beautiful things into here, but don't do that on this one. Um, you want to, what you want to do is make a copy for yourself and there's actually instructions in here, create your own canvas. So how this would work logistically for your classroom setting, I don't know, could be a mess. Might be better to start with a paper pencil version, uh, but I found this and it's a bit of a shiny object. So I'm chasing it. And I, I played around with it myself, just to kind of show kind of how this would work. Okay? So what we want them to do is pick that one thing that they think that they can do as part of their Odyssey project in the next year or two and do their best, right? Given a growth mindset here, we're going to just try this. All right. So at the top, we have values, right? Things that we value. I think it's always good to touch base on those, why we're, we want to do this thing, right? So enriching, uh, I chose, by the way, for me, I chose, I would love to go snowboarding at Banff and Chile in the same trip. How cool would that be? We start north, we head down south and we get it done. I love to snowboard. Uh, I'm totally not in shape for snowboarding. It's something I did as a young man and need to get better at. So I wrote down my values, why I value that. I value, uh, enriching experiences. I love, my family loves the beauty of nature. And then for a career, I have this beauty of location flexibility. At least I don't know if that's right for putting this in here or not, but at least I expressed it, right? That is a value that I have, uh, in my life as far as my career goes. I have the ability to be wherever there is internet. And then my goals are, I want to be snowboard ready from a health point of view, right? I want to, I want to be able to physically experience this thing. So that's one of the goals that's kind of embedded in there, right? And then snowboard in Banff and snowboard in the end. And then when it says moonshot, it's literally like, what would it mean to do like this major and moonshot is basically how do we land on the moon, right? That's literally what that's referring to. So for me, I mashed those together. In April, let's go to Canada and snowboard for a week or two, and then let's hop on a plane and fly all the way south of the equator and get off and in Chile and climb the mountains and go snowboarding there for a week. While I'm already acclimated to the altitude and I'm living the life. So this is about a month long trip for me. Uh, key activities would, and this is where the iteration for your students happens, is in key activities, obstacles and support systems. So that they have unanswered questions here. They're, they might, you might say they're blind to these things, maybe, right? Or at least you'll be able to see whether they are or not. For me, I need to get to where I can jump rope for 20 minutes straight every single day. And trust me, even when I was 21 years old, that meant a puddle of sweat on the floor, gross as that sounds. But that's how, how much effort I know leads to being in a, a position physically to do this thing that I want to do for my looks. I also know I want to practice my Spanish because in Chile, they speak Spanish. In Alberta, Canada, they might speak a little French, but I probably speak quite a bit of, of, uh, English. And then is that I thought, this is something I never thought of until I was putting this together, like what is a key activity? Well, perhaps I should connect with someone from those locations. Maybe there's someone in my community, my network of people, and this is very important when you're thinking about an entrepreneurial venture. Who do I know that I can connect to that knows about these things that might be able to advise me to help with a truth seeking dialogue about this thing that I think that I want to do? From a support point, point of view, I was like completely drew a blank here. What are my support systems for traveling to Chile and Banff to go snowboarding? I was like, well, when I've gone snowboarding past, normally it was on a church trip, like a youth group trip. So I wonder if there are, is like a mission organization that goes and serves in those locations, maybe around uh, Santiago, Chile, that I could hitch my red wagon to and then make it more than just a trip about me experiencing this thing. And then you go down in this, we're pushing against, well, what are my obstacles? Well, clearly I don't have a passport. I mean, there's that. Right now the borders are closed. That's something I really can't change. The passport thing I can work on. The borders being closed, I really, it's a finding information. And then my disciplined exercise routine, that's an obstacle currently because I'm not jumping any rope on any day of any week for the last many months. So would have to maybe prototype around that. And then my inspirations are all the fond memories of snowboarding and trips with the church and then previous success with my preparedness process of jumping rope for 20 minutes a day. So in the module, your students would go through and complete at least one life model canvas. And in fact, true to the way the business model canvas works is the more you do this, the more easy it becomes as far as the action of doing it. But the more fruitful it becomes because you get better at doing it. But the idea is that in block three, your students do at least one of these life model cases based on something that's part of their Odyssey project. And then they share in small groups to get feedback on the key activities piece, the obstacles, support systems and inspirations for them. We want to find a way to develop a prototype that they can build or try out and moves them forward in this goal that they have in this life model canvas. So I'll stop right there. And welcome thoughts, questions, quandaries, inquisitions.
I like the electronic version. It's helpful.
Cool. A word about that. It is a little wonky in the way that they build it. The text and the, is locked to the color for the post-it. So those can be edited separately. They do tend to, anyway, takes some playing with, but otherwise, yeah, it's very helpful. What else?
I like how the life model canvas breaks down the whole wonder versus calculative thinking. Because I was hearing you all talk about that and I'm just thinking about a traditional classroom. It's going to be very hard to get a group of students to shift their mindset from, oh, well, somebody's eventually going to give me the answer if I just sit still long enough. Kind of just like sitting there waiting for something to happen kind of mentality. And this is really achievable way of getting them to start to wonder more about their own lives because it's stuff that they would want to do eventually and then bringing those down into those little parts. So starting the process of meditative thinking as opposed to trying to prompt that when they're more waiting for the answer to be given to them.
That's great. And we're using not only growth mentality, but like some lean startup methodology that we've covered in block two, where it's like, hey, put pencil to paper. Well, here's, here's some paper. You've got the pencil. All right. Thanks, Elena.
And, and Elena, what, how would you envision that as a teacher, you would organize that for students? Would, would that be like a dedicated Google Drive? Or would that be a, a, a hard folder that they print out and keep and then they can edit over time? What, what would be the best way?
Um, well, still mainly on the student's side, but I'm approaching it more as, I would want to give them some privacy too with this, especially with a shared Google Doc, you'd be able to see, oh, my classmate wants to go here. Why? They, they don't seem cool enough for that. Something along those lines. So I would avoid like a shared Google Doc situation. I think hard copy, it would take a lot of paper, I think, but it, it's also that sense of a little bit of journaling. It might be hard for some students who don't like to write as much. They could have the option to do, oh, download your own copy. You just turn it, I'm not even sure we need to really turn this in, but more it's like a process for themselves. But either way it works, but I would want it to be a little bit more private for each student.
Hmm. That's a good point. Lee's, what do you think?
Um, I wanted to just mention, um, a resource that I put in the chat box. Um, and, uh, okay. Um, there we go. And it's just an interesting video on left and right brain differences. Um, and I know, um, Luke had mentioned that, um, when he was talking. So, um, I found it to be interesting. So I wanted to share that. And also I just wanted to, um, mention that, uh, Rachel and I were thinking about the saint of the day as um, an inspiring, um, role model, uh, for, uh, virtue Saint Maria Goretti.
Growth mindset? Whoa.
No, I didn't want to say anything. So that's it.
Well, thank you for that. So Optimumwork.com, great resource as usual from Lee's. Thank you. And yes, the men, I would, I would advocate for the saint of the day any given day. Like maybe that's a great way to start your, your lesson, especially pedagogically, how can we tie this into what we're doing today? Yeah. What an amazing story that was. Um, yeah, what an amazing story that was.
Um, yeah, not necessarily like Saint Maria Goretty because, you know, she went to heaven right after like the horrible thing that happened to her. But, um, her assailant, um, I think his name is Alessandro. Um, he like obviously did something really horrible and then like, but after he like, uh, I think he had a growth mindset, he, or at least he developed into a growth mindset because, um, he like reconciled with her family and everything and learned to like, uh, yeah, learn to be forgiven. I think so. Yeah, that's not really related to right now, but yeah.
No, totally. Like, I think one of the things that holds a lot of people back, and, and I could totally see the life model canvas around this, or especially if you've got students that have experienced trauma. Totally completely available. I mean, privacy is an issue. Elena points out, this is very important to remember, but like, forgiveness is our superpower. And so much of the time when we're setting goal, we're looking at the horizon, right? We're going, I'm going there. I'm going to go climb those mountains. There's a lake over there. I'm going to go to those stars. We're going to colonize that planet. But they got all this trash around their feet. And when I say trash around your feet, I'm talking about like trauma and the missed opportunities to forgive people that have wronged them in the past and their own sin, their own vice. All these things that are just totally in their way, that they're never going to get to those mountains. They're, they're too busy thinking about those mountains. In fact, I would say you need to work on what's under your feet right now. And so what, you know, there's growth mindset, like what can you gain by forgiving someone? Right? You can gain their soul to heaven. It can, it can happen, right? That's I got, I'm with you on that one. I'm in that boat right now. That's beautiful. Any last thoughts on that particular thing? Before I close up with the prototyping plan sheet, which I personally developed. Making fun of myself, Elena, by the way. So once they're done the life model canvas and they've shared, you know, what, and they've worked on the key activities and the obstacles and, uh, the support systems, thinking around what they need, right? What they need to build next. We, we rock into this thing called the prototype plan sheet. And I'm going to share my screen again. Because this is very simple. But it's patterned after something we have already kind of seen when we were looking at the business model canvas. The company that developed that is called Strategizer. I highly recommend creating a strategizer.com account. It's free. And they have tons and tons of resources. They have something that they use called a learning card. And that's what the prototype plan sheet is built like. It's a basically a learning card. In that you have to, to use it correctly, the students actually have to say, this is the solution we are testing. Right? So there is kind of that beautiful mix of calculation and meditation at the same time. Like we think we're going to go and do a thing. But we're going to express what it is first, right? Just the sheer act of writing down whatever your thing that you're testing. Your falsifiable hypothesis goes here. And over on the right, we have this frequency of, of how often is this going to happen, right? Is this something that I do once and I'm, I'm done with it? Or is this something that happens like daily? This is something I think that students don't realize. I don't think artists and musicians realize this. Do you think that? And maybe this isn't the best example. Um, I always say Kanye West. Do you think Kanye West wants to play gold digger at every concert? No, he does not. Do you think Kanye West plays gold digger at every concert? Yes. Yes, he does. Because that's what his customers want. There's a great story about Bob Dylan getting booed off the stage in 1968 by the people that absolutely loved him in 1967. Cause they wanted a type of music that he wasn't prepared to bring to them, right? So are we doing this daily regularly? Or is this just a one done? And it, you know, it's up to them to find out. They might find out that they were off on just the frequency, or that's a part of it. And then the next box, they literally have to express what does good look like? Like when we do this, this is what we're looking to happen as a good outcome. This is what success looks like. And then before we start, let's talk about ways that it could fail. So we're actually kind of almost like a, um, uh, this is almost like a, a litany of sorts where we're going to go through this process and describe before we do anything, what it would look like when it succeeds, what does it look like when it fails? We're going to do it once and take some after action, uh, reflection type of, of observations here. We're going to write down, this is what we did and this is what happened. And then they're encouraged to try again, but express, put it in writing. How are you going to change what you tried? This experiment that you're developing in terms of lean methodology? What are we going to change for attempt number two? And then we're going to go do it. And what is our observation? And then we're going to just, it's amazing. It sounds simple. But just the act of having any kind of like written after action for projects like this is extremely powerful. And this for a teacher, this is documentation. This is completely gradable, right? You can provide feedback with that, this documentation. You can write notes in the margin. So it's a way to encourage that truth seeking dialogue that they're not just doing this because you want them to do it. This is actually a process that can lead to fruit for them. And this is what they, they, they culminate in, in the module seven project. They have a life model canvas. And then their prototype plan sheet that they share with you. The idea being that they have a bias toward action that is rooted and has a basis in it of action, right? So they are doing their prudent work of the business model canvas. They're designing falsifiable hypotheses in small experiments to go out there and try this thing that they want to do, whether it's a good or a service. And then a very much rigorous and disciplined process after the fact of what did we learn? And how are we going to go forward with what we learned? What, how does that change us and our project in the future? Because like Mike Tyson said, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face. So my friends, what are your thoughts? And that's okay, because I can see you, you're making this face. That means you're thinking, right? That means you're not thinking about lunch. Or dinner, I guess, would be the appropriate thing to eat at this point in the day. And that's a good thing, right? You're, you're thinking about what we've shared today. And that is what, at the very basic level, that is success for us. Module seven is a lot of stuff, my friends. There's a lot in there. And we're getting a little bit into the technical, especially the specificity of growth mindset. Uh, lean model, uh, lean methodology and these processes. And so, um, let's end the conversation with, with my eternal pledge to be your help and support in this. If you need any questions answered, you have a link that you can book 30 minutes of Zoom with me. There's of course email and text messaging and Basecamp. I hope if you're on Basecamp, you, you recognize that it's a channel to communicate with, not only with me, but with your fellow colleagues. Um, we've had a lot of that going on back and forth. In the last month, we have doubled the number of key facilitators in training on Basecamp, which is fantastic. And then we've also, by that measure, we have grown the seed community. So we're growing, which means there's a ton of intellectual horsepower in the mix. So that means that I won't feel so compelled to answer every question. I'll be like, hey, what do you think? What do you guys think? Cause you guys are way smarter than I am. Uh, among other things. So with that, I have, um, pledged my eternal service to you. And please do take me up on that. And that helps me to feel fulfilled in my calling. And then I will just say thank you for being here tonight, especially after a holiday weekend. Wasn't expecting such a great turnout, but my thanks and gratitude for that. I'm very grateful to be part of this group and I think we're all very blessed to be doing this work. So thank you for letting us be a part of it. We'll sign off. Until next time. Okay? We do have, uh, um, the fireside chat on the third Thursday of the month. You're all welcome to join us for that every single time. And then, uh, we'll be back next month, the first Tuesday of the month for a groundwork session on module eight, which is about leadership and leading yourself first. Thanks so much. We'll see you next time.